Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is November 3, 2021. This meeting now comes to order. Today, we're going to have a tribute to the veterans. Also, during the presentation, we have many veterans who are employed here at the city of Cape Coral, and we will be recognizing them as well in the video. To all the veterans here today, I want to thank you for your service and your sacrifice to our country while Veterans Day is observed on November 11. Before we start today's city council meeting, we would like to take a moment to recognize the men and women who have served our nation. Please stand for a moment of silence for those that have given their life to our country. Thank you. Please be seated. We will now play a video presentation in the honor of Veterans Day, and in each branch of the military, we'll be honoring their song. If you're a veteran, we ask that you stand during the playing of your song to be recognized. Thank you for honoring our veterans today and showing your support. If you're a veteran, please, one more time, stand. Thank you for your service. Now, we ask that everyone to stand for the singing of the National Anthem to be performed by Bailey McArthur, a senior at Oasis High School.
Oh, say, can you see? By the dawn's early light was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose barge stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight. O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of love and the home
Thank you, Bailey, and if you would, please continue to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Welsh has asked to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Shepard?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I'd like to pass the gavel. I'd like to make a motion. Today, I look back at Councilmember Welsh's attendance record, and I think one of the main responsibilities that we have as a council is to participate in our council meetings that are required by each one of us. It's listed in our council rules of procedure, but more importantly, I think we owe that to our constituents that voted for us to be here on their behalf. And when I look at the attendance records of Councilmember Welsh, he missed a meeting back on August 10. He missed a meeting back on August 18. He missed a meeting on September 23. He missed a meeting on September 29. And again, he misses a meeting here again today. So I feel that we have a responsibility to make sure we're present during these meetings. So therefore, I make a motion that we hold Councilmember Welsh's absence today unexcused. So I'm looking for a second for that motion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, do we know, like, I know some of us have missed meetings because of family issues, deaths, sickness. Most of us that have had to do that, though, especially with COVID, did participate remotely every chance we could. I know for myself, having to go to a conference last year for, or earlier this year for my new job, which I'll probably have to do again next February, I was still able to participate in the meeting remotely. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, for the public's purposes, that they understand the nature of these absences, because I'm not sure I know all of them. I think I know some of them. I know this particular absence was for a vacation, but I just want to make sure that, you know, the public understands that we do make concessions, you know, when there's, when there are special things. So maybe if you could clarify, Mayor, why this is different, that might be helpful. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate?
I believe this was a vacation.
That's what I said.
Yeah, and, and I think there was three that were vacations, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for the public, because I know, like I said, we make special concessions, you know, for those of us that have work obligations. But, but I will say that we're all pretty good about calling in and participating remotely. I mean, I will say that. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and I think if we can attend physically, I think that with today's technology and what we've done here, especially with the pandemic and COVID, we could participate remotely. I can say that I, I've been here four years. I think I participated remotely once and haven't missed any other meetings in that four-year period of time. I'm not saying that things don't come up. There's not family emergencies. There's not sicknesses. But in my opinion, Councilmember Welsh has only been here for a short period of time, and if you look at his track record and the reasons for those absences, to me, it's getting to be more than what I think the expectation should be for, for this council. So that's why I brought it forward. I didn't hear a second. You did second.
I did.
Okay. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, Mayor, just to make sure, and these are all meetings that he was physically not at. None of these were done over Zoom or Teams or whatever, correct?
And I got this information from our city clerk today, so I will ask her.
In just a moment, I'll pull up the research that I conducted.
In the meantime, Ms. City Attorney, because he asked to be excused, can we, as it was then our purview, to change that to an unexcused absence?
Pursuant to the council rules, absences are presumed excused and are unexcused only by a motion to hold the absence unexcused and a majority vote in favor of that motion. Such motion and vote must occur no later than the next regularly scheduled council meeting after the date absent. So if you did not want to take this up today, or you wanted to take it up at a meeting, at, at the next regularly scheduled meeting, when Councilmember Welsh might be there to participate in the discussion, you would have the option of doing that.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, there's a motion, and, oh, I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk?
So, Your Honor and counsel, in the research I conducted, it shows that the August 17th was a joint workshop. The August 18th was a regular. The September 23rd was a special, and the September 29th was a special. So those, three of those were added meetings.
But he did not participate in any of those meetings in any form?
I don't see a reference of remote participation.
Okay, but there's a motion and a second. Councilmember Long?
Madam City Attorney, can you please explain what, what is the result of an unexcused
Madam City Attorney?
Pursuant to the charter, if a member has three consecutive unexcused absences from regular meetings, then technically, that subjects them to potential forfeiture of their office.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Nay.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay. Motion carried.
Okay, next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. I do have two that I would like to mention. First off, on the consent agenda item, which is Resolution 243-21, has been withdrawn from tonight's agenda by the city manager. My understanding that this would be coming back at a later date?
No, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to clarify that we've proposed it.
I'm sorry. We've proposed an amendment to this item that would remove any references to a boat dock. So you can choose to leave it on the agenda as amended or withdraw it and bring it back later.
Okay. All right. So you're asking that we move forward with it, then, with the amendment?
With the amendments as prepared by the city attorney's office. Yes, sir.
Okay, and then if we want to have a, a discussion on that, then we could always pull that item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so we will cancel that agenda change. Mr. City Manager, my understanding is you've requested to remove item 10B4, Ordinance 95-21, which is the PUD-0002, has been withdrawn by the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so we'll remove that particular item only from the tonight's agenda? And do I have a motion to adopt the remaining?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, and if someone doesn't feel comfortable with that, I wanted to add to my motion to add the language that was given to us as it relates to the Founder's Park, which I forget which one that is, but... Because basically, that removes the boat docks, and it continues the beautification project at the park.
Second.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that at yesterday's CRA meeting, the, the CRA board selected the concept plan that it wanted to pursue, but that concept plan still had the boat docks in it. So that has been made an exhibit to the resolution that you have before you today, but it's still reflecting the boat dock. So I would recommend that when you get to the actual consent agenda, that that item be pulled, and if you're going to approve that resolution, resolution...
Mayor, I'll remove that item from my...
Resolution 253, I'm sorry, Resolution 243-21, that the council just be clear that while you're approving it, you're approving it with no reference at all to the, to any of the docks, because it's that, concept plan has now been attached as Exhibit A to the resolution, but it still reflects the docks in it.
I think that's what I said, right? Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, can I clarify that the motion on the floor is to approve the agenda as presented, and staff had asked to remove...
To remove the two items?
Well, just, we're removing the one item, Ordinance 95-21, leaving the other one on the consent agenda.
Then 243-1 is as presented, removing the docks with the information that was presented to council.
And removing completely the introduction for 10B4. The second agrees?
Yes.
And before we call the roll, Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. Is now, just procedurally, is now the appropriate time to bring up the amendment, or do we do that when we bring it out of the consent agenda? I don't think it needs to be part of this motion.
Are you talking about the Founder's Park?
Yes.
I would think that we're just approving the agenda, and if we're leaving it there, and then we can pull it, and then have that discussion at that time.
Correct. So it's not part of your motion?
Yes. Does the second agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, now, is item seven approval amendments? Do we have a motion to approve the amendments from the regular meeting of October 20, 2021? A second. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item eight is citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Anyone wishing to participate in citizens' input, I ask to use the podium to the left.
Got to be careful. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Lou Navara, widower, 40-year resident of the Cape, veteran, 38-years teacher here, retired in the district. To my former voters who voted for me in District 4 school board race, which was derailed by that false arrest, and to the 33,000 voters who voted for me to dis, in District 5 that I narrowly lost last year, I'm reporting my support for the half-ascend sales tax for Cape Charter School. The school board meeting last night, I have, I have, I, I want to make the following comments, okay? If I was the school board chair and had been elected, like, I got derailed, this wouldn't have happened. That's what I want to say. The mayor and his entourage were excellent. They told the truth. Debbie Jordan, District 4, sold all of us out. I want you to know that. She can't speak up for Charter Schools for, for the Cape? Shame on her. And the refusal of the half-ascend tax. She's out of order last night with the vote, because we had, with my research, which I'll give to you pretty quickly, we had Gwyn Gettens and our Cape representative, Mary Fisher, want to hold everything up for more study, because no one was consulted. So she's out of order, according to my Roberts rules, and I'm filing a complaint for, and have that meeting redone properly. You don't coerce two board members into voting, and I will file that tomorrow. I've spoken with the superintendent's executive secretary. The facts show right here. That's a regressive half-ascend, but here's the deal. On the odd numbers, you're paying 1%. The state, and Debbie finally, at least she gave me that. So you're paying even more. There's plenty of money, and with inflation now, they're, they're getting a windfall, because go to the grocery store. So I've got the revenue sheet, and they know it. Chris Patrica, she wasn't telling the truth. No people were ever consulted from the Cape, and I told her, don't say, let rest in peace the ex-mayor, because he passed away. Town hall meetings, I went to them. I really didn't like the tax, anyway, but I went to them. Nothing was ever mentioned by the board, Patrica, Mr. Toyber, okay? So I have complained about that, and she wants you to privatize to save money, but I'll make it quick. We, we sent them a bunch of stuff Marvin and I gets to privatize, and they threw it in the garbage, and they know that.
Wrap it up, Mr. Navara.
All right. I'll be working on this. I'm contacting Duval in Sarasota, and I don't like the grandfather clause that they're using. If the governor hears about it, he's not going to be very happy. And the teachers' association, I was a member. I don't approve of what they're doing. It comes out of their playbook.
Thank you.
Sorry I took so long.
Thank you, sir.
And thanks for being generous. They would have thrown me out at the school district last night. They, I had to be the last one, and they forgot to call me. Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, my name is Steve Fabian. I'm a Northwest Cape resident. I purchased a home about 12 years ago, a new home, and I'm a retired accounting professor who, who's very happy with, you know, living here. But I think there's an issue mainly stems from the population growth, and it's a, it's really a pandemic. Not talking about a, a virus pandemic, but it's the idea of, and that's going to seem silly, but loose dogs. You can't ride a bike, the whole bike lane that they're building on, on, you know, on, on veterans north of Pineland, you know? You know, you can't even ride your bike on a daily basis without having somebody who thinks it's glamorous, or prestigious, or adolescent, or whatever you want to call it, all age groups have their dog loose. And this is like, it's a serious issue, because that is the main issue about what animal will hurt you. I've had dogs all my life, but I would never be that inconsiderate, that I think it's a, you know, it's trendy or something to have your dog loose. I've been attacked so many times walking on a bike. I've actually been attacked in my house, standing on my deck in the back, having a loose animal, a loose dog, a, a large dog, quite a few times, different dogs, try to break through the screen to attack you. Now, I like to know what can be done. Maybe some signs can be incorporated in the budget, especially on the bike path that they're building, you know, that, that they're building to say how serious the township is about enforcing that this, this loose dog, dog without a leash kind of stuff, people walking around with 20-foot leashes or 30-foot leashes, so you can't even walk by them, never mind being a bicycle. And it's not just a bicycle. I mean, I, you really feel unsafe, and I had dogs all my life. I've had big dogs, I've had Dobermans, I've all kinds of dogs. I'm a dog-loving person, but I think this is really out there where the buses don't run. It really is a serious issue, and I don't think animal control... Maybe they can incorporate some signs in the budget every so often to show residents that we are serious about this and walking around with your dog loose is not, you know, something that should be, you know, done, seen on a regular basis. I mean, you know, it's usually a hint that you got a city that's going downhill when you see loose, you know, mangy dogs running around loose. So, and this is what we, this is a real serious problem when you can't feel safe because of this issue, because it's prestigious or whatever to have your dog loose. I'm free, I'm down here in Florida, I'm free, so my dog can be free. I don't know what the mentality is. You know, like I said, I'm a retired teacher, so I think a little bit about the mentality. But I hope, hope the town council, hope it's not like one hand clapping where nothing can be done. Hope you can do something. Maybe somebody can start something to put signs up, something every so often, just to let people know we're serious here. And it's an issue. It really is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizen? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Martha Palacios. I have a, I'm not talking about monit, I need support from you because I just went to the building department asking for help because I have a condo, the building was made in nineteen seventy-nine and it has a lot of cracks on the ceiling, a lot of cracks on the second floor, a lot of cracks and the pool has cracks and it's empty water. I pay association fee, the association doesn't do anything for months, for years, and it's getting worse, the building is getting worse and I'm afraid about collapse and I don't want that happen. And I don't know where to go, where to ask for support. Here, the office in the city, I mean, in this building, in that department say to come tonight and expose my case and I'm asking you guys for support. What do I have to do next in that situation?
Thank you. Have a seat and I'm sure we'll address your concern.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce Marvin, seventeen-year citizen of Cape Coral, thirteen years in the United States Air Force. Next year, you're going to have to include the Space Command because I'm sure we're going to have some veterans from the Space Command. Anyway, I'd like to express my thanks to city council members for the work that you do to keep the city going and especially to the city council members that respond to my emails. I'm really concerned with the legislation that's coming from Tallahassee on home-based businesses and also Florida Senate Bill sixty on code viol, reporting code violations by citizens. I want to make it clear that I have no problem with the expansion of what can be considered a home-based business. The issue I have is allowing commercial signs on residential R1 properties beyond those relating to the sale of the property or temporary commercial signs during construction, remodeling, et cetera. At issue is ordinance sixty-nine twenty-one changes that address residential signs, specifically removal of language addressing commercial messages. This change allows for commercial measured signs on residential zone property. An ordinance forty-three dash twenty-one, which was just adopted in June on permit signs residential, that allows for at least one sign, a maximum of four square feet and a height of five square feet, and a permit is only required if it has a permanent foundation or electrical lighting. Just imagine a sign for adult services at a home next to you. Any guess on what that will do to your property value? Lastly, both of these state of Florida legislative acts will require additional work on the part of code enforcement. Only time will tell if reactive code cases drop due to Senate Bill sixty and the slack cannot be picked up in the proactive reporting, which is a measurable index, and the increased requirements concerning home-based businesses allowed by combined Senate-House Bill four oh three. I have confidence that code enforcement will step up to the plate, but time is going to tell whether it's going to be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other person would like to speak during citizens' input, please come forward.
My name is Constance Mahan. I live in the northeast part of Cape Coral. I've been here about ten, eleven years. I've really enjoyed, excuse me, I've really enjoyed the stay, but this isn't anything, I don't think it's that small as far as relative to a property owner. I'm a property owner and I have a home. My concern is, this is not a new issue, this happened last year, is a huge trampoline, size of a house, I categorize it, landed on my well. Landing on my well is, to me, an issue because I just installed a new well. It was over five thousand dollars. So I saw that and panicked, came home at dusk and my son said, take a look in the backyard. And it was my neighbor's, new neighbor, he's a renter from the back, directly, not behind me, but right in the back, to the right, and that's all I needed to see. So I addressed it to him because it broke a panel. I have photos of the panel of the, if it just landed in the backyard, but it broke a panel of, a vinyl fence panel that I had purchased from low, sixty-dollar value. And so I'm thinking, well, I can address him and, you know, sixty dollars, I put it in a nice way, and so I did. Trampoline was then removed from my yard, put into an area where he took his time. It was an empty lot that it was put on so that he could just take it and put it over his fence that was demolished, there's a chain link. He didn't remove it right away. I addressed code and code said he had to take it off the empty lot, but he took his time and he had until a certain day. Four days from then, he was addressed and he did because code told him to. I don't think he, I'm not personally accusing him, but I'm not so sure he would have taken more time and more time to remove it. That being said, I went over very nicely and asked, his wife was in the back on the cement, and I said, can I speak to your husband? She said, yeah, he's over here, he came very nicely. I told her, your trampoline did this, it just destroyed part of my fence, the panel. And I says, this is going to cost me, I said, about, you know, fifty-seven dollars. I said, can I have the reimbursement? And he said, yeah, when do you want it? And I said, well, this was like midweek, I said, by the weekend and is okay? And he said, yeah, I'll have it by the weekend. So then weekend came and he never, he never addressed it and then later he rode by the house and I said, hey, you know, where's the, where's the money? He said, oh, he says, put it on your homeowner's and he just drove off. And from then I knew that I couldn't approach him anymore. I went back to code and they said, well, he's allowed to have the trampoline, so we can't do anything about it. And I had no problem with that, but he didn't have it tied down and I told him so. I said, you never tied that down. We had a bad windy night. It wasn't even a hurricane. It was a, it was a windy night and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm concerned that so far, so good. We haven't really been hit with the hurricane presently, so I'm not as anxious, but I was a little while ago when we were threatened with one. But, you know, this is, this is now November, we have all November.
Wrap it up.
We still have all December and I'm getting nowhere. I just, I just want them to tie it down. It's back up again and I would like them to at least know, is it tied down again? That's all.
Wrap it up, ma'am. Your three minutes is up.
Okay.
If you'd like, sit down and council will have opportunity to.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other person wishing to speak on citizens' input, please come forward. See and nun, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Tate?
Thank you. I just, I did want to thank Mr. Navara. He did come out yesterday to support charter schools and he did stay for the whole day, so I really appreciate your support. And on the gentleman that spoke about the loose animals, we pay six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Lee County Animal Control and all you have to do is call them and they will, if there is a loose animal, we have a leash law in Cape Coral, so we shouldn't have loose dogs running around on the bike paths and things like that. If there is one, they will bring it back to Lee County Animal Control and find its owner. So please do that and we can provide you with the information if you don't have it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo what Councilmember Tate said regarding Mr. Navara, thank you as well for the support. I'm curious to know, Mayor, if you or Councilmember Tate will be discussing the details of that meeting or the outcome of that meeting with the rest of us during your reports? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, the, Mr. Marvin, who brought up the two topics of home base and code complaints, as I'm sure you're well aware, state legislation passed that into law. Whether we like it or not, unfortunately, we have to follow it. I do think that it's going to, as far as code complaints, it's going to put the burden back onto their code officers as far as proactive enforcement. I think that you'll probably see less people want to file a complaint since they have to give their names. And the home base rule, again, whether we support it or not, we have to follow it. So I think, you know, we'll have to see the impacts here in the future, what that may bring. The young lady that came in, reference to the trampoline, ma'am, that is basically a civil matter. My recommendation would be to either contact an attorney or your insurance company and go that route. Unfortunately, that's outside of our purview here at city council, so we can interject ourselves into that matter. I don't have any other comments. Any other comments?
Mayor, did the lady with the condo, oh, I see she talked to Vince and La.
Yeah, I think Mr. Katera addressed her concerns, so I think we covered everyone. So we'll move on to item nine is business and we'll move on to nine A consent agenda and I'll open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion.
Mayor, can I pull resolution two forty-three twenty-one, please?
Surely, any other?
And make a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda. A second.
Any other discussion? See and nun, Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll.
So on two forty-three twenty-one, the CRA did meet yesterday. I did get many calls over the weekend, lots of concerns and misinformation about the boat docks. Whether it was the right thing or not, we had a lot of confusion. People as far as Four Freedoms Park were calling me saying that the canal was going to be winding and affect them. So there was a lot of misinformation out there or lack of information, I would say. So it is my understanding that the CRA has moved forward with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the park, but to eliminate any discussion on the boat docks at this time. And I believe that is correct. I would ask the city manager since I was at the school board meeting.
You are correct in your description of what happened yesterday.
So then if, if everybody else has discussion and if not, I'll make, I make a motion to go ahead and approve it as distributed with the amendment and if I get a second, then you can discuss it.
I'll second.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I know this might be a trivial point, but on exhibit A to the interlocal agreement, which is the concept one, for the proposed improvements to the Founder's Park, I just want to point out that the center circle, and for whatever reason on this version it didn't print out, that's identified as a site for a public art piece. It just doesn't show on this particular one, so I just wanted to make sure that you know that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
I apologize, Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Mayor, next item is personnel actions and I don't see anything listed. Petitions to council, I don't see anything as well. Item nine D is appointments to boards and committees. D one is Stormwater Special Master. We have one vacancy. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a vacancy for the Stormwater Special Master due to a resignation. When advertised, we received one application from Brian Rose. I'm not sure if he's present today. I didn't see him check in. Mr. Rose, okay, thank you. If you'd like him to come up to the podium for an interview, that would be great. I did have the application reviewed by the Public Works Department that works in the Stormwater Division and they confirmed that he meets the qualifications.
And we have one vacancy and one applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do we have a motion? Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item on agenda is the Municipal Firefighters Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees. We have one vacancy and I believe three applicants. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, for the Firefighters Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees, there are three applications. The first is from William Patrick Long, the second from Barbara Jean Sefranic, and the third from Jennifer Rose Watler. I apologize, the spelling is incorrect in the paperwork, it is Watler. So both Mr. Long and Ms. Watler are present today if you'd like to interview them.
Surely. And I see here on the agenda, one vacancy for council appointment and one vacancy for council ratification. That's one in the same?
It's actually a separate action item after, if you please, after the appointment is made for the council decision, the second action item is a ratification. A fifth trustee is selected from the members of the board and council gives it the ratification nod or bring to it or not. So would you like me to call applicants up?
Please.
Sure. William Patrick Long, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium to tell a little bit about yourself? That would be fine.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Pat Long. I'm a resident of Cape Coral for almost six years. I'm a current city employee. I'm Water Reclamation Manager for the city. I've worked as a public servant with municipalities for over forty years and understand the importance both to the city and employees of having a strong and viable defined pension plan. Especially as Cape Coral grows, it will be imperative to continue to protect and strengthen the firefighters' pension plan to be able to recruit quality personnel. I served as an elected trustee for the city of Fort Lauderdale. General Employees Plan for three years through December two thousand seventeen. At that time, I was an employee of the city of Cape Coral and according to their pension rules, I was not allowed to continue as a trustee with that plan. I maintained my certification as a public pension trustee at my own personal cost for two years after I left Fort Lauderdale, hoping I'd have another chance to serve in the capacity again. I was appointed by the city council in January two thousand twenty to complete the term of longtime board member Stephen Quah. I've been a certified Florida public pension trustee since February of two thousand sixteen and have a working knowledge of Florida statutes one twelve, one seventy-five, and one eighty-five, which govern pensions in the state of Florida. I would appreciate your support in continuing to allow me to use my education and experience to serve in a fiduciary role to benefit the city's fire department personnel and their beneficiaries. And I thank you very much for your consideration and I would welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any questions for Mr. Long? See and nun, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jennifer Rose Watler?
My name's Jennifer Watler.
Hello, everyone. My name's Jennifer Watler. I am originally from Iowa. I grew up there on my family farm. I was involved in all aspects of the farm business, from shoveling the corn, helping sell the corn, as well as the bookkeeping and managing all the expenses with that as well. I then moved to Florida. I love the environment down here. I'm currently working for the Department of Environmental Protection. I've been doing that for six years now. I would like to serve on this board for multiple reasons. My husband is currently a firefighter at North Collier, down in Naples. My father-in-law is also, he's a retired firefighter of 33 years over at Deerfield Beach. He also is currently serving on the City of Deltona firefighter pension board, so I have a little relation there. My sister-in-law also serves on the firefighter, City of Boynton Beach firefighter's pension board, so I have heard how things work there as well. I feel like, since moving down here to Florida and seeing more populated areas and how important it is to get involved in the community, especially at a young age, to have those different voices and different perspectives to bring to the table. I also am currently pursuing my, getting my Series 65 license to learn more about investing and getting more knowledge about money and finance as well. And I think this would be a great opportunity for me to give back to the community and serve in this role and help secure finances and also maintain or keep those good employees on the board.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
And, Your Honor and Council, if I may mention, Barbara Jean Sefranic had a scheduling conflict today but has a deep interest in serving. Should council determine that selection, she would require a two-thirds vote, as she is a current member on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Charter Review Commission.
Okay, thank you. So I guess what we'll do, like we normally do, Madam City Clerk, is we'll go down the list in our voting line today and pick an individual.
Certainly. Gunter?
Long.
Hayden?
Long.
Long?
Long.
Nelson?
Walter.
Shepherd?
Long.
Tate? Cosden?
Long.
So that is six for Long and one for Watler.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
We'll move on to the vacancy of the council ratification. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, so the next, oh, yes, the ratification. The name that has been supplied is Damian Almonte, and it is the selection of the pension board to make him the fifth trustee, and I was hoping for a motion from the council to accept and affirm that appointment.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is the Municipal Police Employees Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees. We have one vacancy. Madam City Clerk?
So for the Police Employees Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees, there is one vacancy for council appointment. We have three applicants, Robert Kepler, Barbara Jean Sefranic, and Jennifer Rose Watler. Both Mr. Kepler and Ms. Sefranic were unable to attend today's meeting but desire to be appointed. They're very interested in the position. And again, if Barbara Jean Sefranic is considered, she would require a two-thirds vote, because she is a current P&amp;Z member and Charter Review Commissioner. Jennifer Watler is present. She had just interviewed for the previous. So would you like me to call her up to the podium or tally for a selection?
I think probably going to be the same information that she's already given us. So I think we could probably just move to go down the council list for their choice.
Gunter?
Kepler.
Hayden?
Kepler.
Long?
Kepler.
Nelson?
Kepler.
Shepherd?
Kepler.
Tate?
Kepler.
Cosden?
Kepler.
That's seven for Kepler.
And do I have a motion?
So move. Go point, Kepler.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in two seconds. Madam City Clerk?
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
And I want to thank you, ma'am, for putting your name in. We have many committees and boards, so please feel free to apply to one of those in the future. So thank you. Okay, follow-up items for city management. Looks like we have a water quality update. Mr. Klingon?
Paul Klingon, Public Works. Maya Robert will be giving you an update on water quality.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Maya Robert, Public Works. Not much to report on water quality. We are in this transition phase to drier months. So right now, we're looking at getting some beneficial flow from the lake to sustain salinities for the health of the estuary and its habitat. For the Lico Ketchum B. System Operating Manual, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers have pushed back the date when they will announce what the loss on plan chosen will be. The date instead of yesterday has been pushed to November 16th. There's not much news on the bubble curtains permitting process, but I'm here if you have any other questions.
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for the update. Okay, we'll move on to item 10, ordinances and resolutions. Excuse me. Item 10A is public hearings. We have Resolution 234-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 234-21, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for easements underlying a previously vacated alley in public utility and drainage easements lying in lots 14 through 25, block 1543, Cape Coral, Unit 17, as more particularly described herein. Property located at 318 Northeast 16th Place, providing an effective date.
Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony, please be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Patrick White, Planning Department. This case is Resolution 234-21. This aerial does a pretty good job showing you what's on the property right now. The property is addressed at 318 Northeast 16th Place. The authorized representative on this vacation is Avalon Engineering, and the applicants are requesting to vacate a little over 7,000 square feet of public utility and drainage easements and underlying easements that were under a formerly vacated alley. There's a period of time when the city vacated alleys but retained the underlying easements. These are all located in lots 14 to 25 of Block 1543. I made this a little aerial here. That blue area, kind of running down the center, depicts where the underlying easements of the alley are, and those yellow areas depict where the PUEs are that are going to be vacated. The image on the right shows the current zoning map. This property is all zoned commercial, as are properties to the southwest, north, and there's some RML property further through the south and to the east. The property is 12 lots. The property has a commercial professional future land use designation that's shared with properties to the north, south, and west. The applicant has requested this vacation to eliminate these internal easements and facilitate future development of the property. And an exhibit is located on the right that was provided from the applicant. I've outlined the perimeter public utility easement in a yellow or gold color. It is not affected by this request. It meets all the requirements of LDC 3.45. It complies with the comp plan and supports an economic development plan goal, and we are retaining our easements. No additional easements are required. The hearing examiner recommended approval with conditions on September 14th. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, and we have received no inquiries or correspondence on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. I now open public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance on Resolution 234-21, please come forward.
Good evening, Linda Miller, Avalon Engineering, representing the property owner and the future development developer of this site. I'd like to thank Patrick on his presentation tonight. I don't really have anything else to add. This easement, the easements are in the middle of the site, and we need to vacate them in order to redevelopment, redevelop the site. I stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance, I'm sorry, Resolution 234-21? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 234-21?
So move.
Second. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 235-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 235-21, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Bimini and Skylark Canal right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots 31 and 32, block 126, Cape Coral, Unit 5, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 31 and 32, block 126, Cape Coral, Unit 5. Property located at 5201 Skylark Court, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, for the record, Patrick White, Planning Department. My credentials may be obtained from the city clerk's office. This case, Resolution 235, I made this little aerial, kind of depicts where we are in the city. This is a piece of property that is located at 5201 Skylark Court. The applicants are Peter and Winifred Foster. They are looking to build a new home. This aerial is already out of date. That site's now vacant. The applicants are requesting to vacate 690 feet of Canal right-of-way and 1,074 feet of interior public utilities, or, excuse me, exterior public utility easements. The partial is R1, has a single-family future land use designation, as do all properties in all directions. The single-family home was demoed in late 2020. The 690 square feet of upland area, it's depicted on this image here. You can see, the GIS is always maybe a foot or two off, but you can see where the seawall is and where the property line is depicted in red. The applicant is requesting that we vacate the site, the portion of that that abuts the Bimini Canal and Skylark Canal on the north and west of their property. Within the resolution are two exhibits. Exhibit one is the Canal right-of-way vacation. Exhibit two is the PUE. Now, in this instance, the applicant is proposing to vacate all of the existing PUE, and then in Exhibit three, which is a condition of staff that they rededicate the easements needed to reestablish the perimeter PUE that will accomplish the obtaining the city's perimeter public utility easement. So the case required, met all of the requirements of Section 345. It complied with the comprehensive plan. A perimeter easement is reestablished by staff's condition. A public hearing was held on September 14th before HECs. HECs recommended approval with conditions. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 235-21. I received two telephone inquiries. They were both just kind of wondering what the neighbors were up to. I received one inquiry by email. No one expressed any disagreement or consternation over the request. Thank you. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 235-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for approval?
So move. Second.
I just had one quick question, just to make sure we're clear. We're going to vacate those two items that you had noted in the exhibit, but we are going to add back in the six-foot public utility easement in that area. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We're realigning it so it aligns with the appropriate property line after the vacation goes through.
All right. I have no other questions. I don't see any other lights on, so Madam City Clerk, we have a motion in a second. Could you please call the roll?
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Move on to Resolution 241-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 241-21, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Majestic Canal right-of-way, located adjacent to lots 58 through 59, block 27, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2. Property located at 5302 Malaluka Court, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Struve?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, for the record, Mike Struve, Planning Team Coordinator with the Planning Division. My credentials are in file with the city clerk's office. This case before you this evening involves a privately initiated vacation request. The owner is C.T. Lending Solutions, LP. The owner is requesting to vacate 33 square feet of Canal right-of-way for a part of the Majestic Canal. This particular site is located in Southeast Coral at 5302 Malaluka Court. It's an aerial map showing the subject site. You notice it has canal frontage to the west. This aerial is a little dated as a single-family home with a pool, has recently been constructed on the site. This is a zoning map showing that the subject property has R1 zoning, as do all surrounding properties within 500 feet of the site. Some background on this case, the site is over 12,000 square feet. As I mentioned earlier, a relatively new single-family home with a pool has been constructed on the site. The site also has a seawall to the west or to the rear of the property. And if the aerial looked familiar to some of you, it should be, because you had entertained a vacation request on this site back in June, which led to the adoption of Resolution 11021. Now, that resolution vacated over 400 square feet of Canal right-of-way and over 300 square feet of platted easements. Following the approval of that resolution, the applicant discovered that the owner's surveyor had made a small error in the field. And what that resulted in was a discovery that there was actually more unexcavated Canal right-of-way that could conceivably be vacated. It's a small amount of right-of-way, but it turned out to be pretty significant from the owner's point of view. So what that led to was the refiling of a new application, which this particular case represents this evening, and the applicant is requesting to vacate a little bit more additional unexcavated Canal right-of-way. And this is a sketch provided by the applicant surveyor, showing the location and the area. 33 square feet of Canal right-of-way, the city would be retaining all underlying easements. In addition, to ensure that the city would maintain a six-foot wide public utility and drainage easement around the expanded site, the applicant would be providing the city with some replacement easements, as shown here in red, along the canal. Staff has analyzed this request consistent with those standards for vacation. Staff has analyzed this request consistent with those standards for vacation requests that appear in the Land Development Code in Article 3. The Canal Right-of-Way in this area consists entirely of unexcavated Canal Right-of-Way or dry land. The Right-of-Way area is small, 33 square feet. Due to its isolation, its small size, staff does not believe that this Right-of-Way area would provide any foreseeable public benefit. All easements underlying the Right-of-Way would be retained by the city. LCEC, Comcast, and CenturyLink have reviewed this application. They have no objection. And the city will be receiving replacement easements from the owner as a condition of approval. Staff is recommending approval of this resolution with conditions that appear in resolution 241-21. The hearing examiner did review this request in September and recommends approval with staff conditions. We had no speakers at public hearing. We had previously received one phone call just from an individual wanting more information about this particular request. And I'll stand by in case you have questions.
Thank you. I now open public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on resolution 241-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. 241-21.
All right. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 80-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 80-21, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Land Development Code, amending Article 3 Development Review, Chapter 3, Specific Review Procedures, Administrative Permits and Approvals. Section 3.3.6 Administrative Deviations. Regarding deviations for boat canopies, amending Article 3 Development Review, Chapter 4, Specific Review Procedures, Quasi Judicial Permits and Approvals. Section 3.4.2 Deviations. Regarding deviations from marine improvement dimensional standards, amending Article 5 Development Standards, Chapter 2, Accessory Structures. Section 5.2.10, Gazebos, Sun Shelters, and Similar Shelters. Regarding height requirements, amending Article 5 Development Standards. Chapter 4, Marine Improvements. Section 5.4.2, General Requirements. Section 5.4.3, Dimensional Standards. Section 5.4.4, Joint Marine Improvements. Section 5.4.6, Davits, Watercraft Lifts, and Floating Docks. Section 5.4.7 Boat Canopies and Section 5.4.10, Construction Standards Regarding Requirements for Marine Improvements. Deleting Section 5.4.5 Keys and Mooring Piles and Creating Section 5.4.11 Deviations. Establishing Procedures for deviations from the requirements of Chapter 4. Amending Article 11, Definitions, Chapter 1, General Provisions. Section 11.2, Definitions, by adding definitions for sun shelter and thatched roof, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 80-? I'm sorry. I'm turning it over to staff first. I gotta edit myself.
No problem. Good evening. Justin Heller, Senior Planner with the Cape Coral Planning Division. This text amendment was previously presented to you at the Committee of Home Meeting on September 8th. It also went to Planning and Zoning, and they recommended approval. There have been no changes since you last heard this. Just to quickly summarize, this amendment will restore the deviation process for marine improvements that existed in the former Land Use and Development Regulations. Will also restore some additional language that was inadvertently deleted, reformat the chapter, correct some grammatical errors, and add some new language for clarification. I do have a presentation prepared if you'd like to hear it. Otherwise, I'll stand by for questions.
Okay. Anyone wishing to see the presentation? Okay, I will now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 80-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 80-21?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 57-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 57-21, an ordinance amending Chapter 9 Health and Sanitation. Article 3 Disposition of Garbage. Sections 9-64 through 9-75.8 of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances pertaining to refuse removal for residential dwellings and commercial establishments within the city, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Cattaro.
Thank you. Vince Cattaro, Director of the Development Services Department. We have a brief presentation for you. The ordinance title as you, or the number as you just heard from the clerk is 5721. As we've talked about before from some other work that we've done in this area and the contracts with Waste Pro, the purpose and intent is to bring the regulations together from residential and commercial disposal to be consistent with the contract, the new contract with Waste, Waste Pro. This ordinance does have a lot of definitions, and we'll go through a few of those here this evening. As I stated, it aligns the contract with our current practice. And it creates a process for what we call timely removal of non-compliant bulky waste. I know it's a mouthful, but this is one of three major issues that the ordinance covers. It covers what we call non-compliant waste, compliant waste, and white goods. White goods would be appliances, not furniture that you used to when people say, you've heard about the couch and the table and the chairs moved out. That's, those aren't white goods. The white goods would be the washer dryer, refrigerator. Again, one of the major portions of the ordinance is aimed at unsightly and non-compliant move-out trash. And property owners are billed and held responsible for all costs for improperly placing this out on their property, and code enforcement has a role in it in terms of follow-up. So bulk trash or horticultural waste that's piled and identified as reported as non-compliant goes to code compliance. What code compliance does is they go out and they verify that, that it is non-compliant. And then there's a notice of violation issued. Property owner has some time to correct it. If they don't correct it, we make the call to Waste Pro. Waste Pro comes out, billing takes place, and then we have to go back out again and make sure that there's final compliance. So there's a, there's a detailed process there. And what we've stated on this slide is essentially the process in a shorter version of what the ordinance states. So that's what this slide covers here. So what we're trying to do is, is establish the process that people will have to go through and show that there's recourse if people don't follow the guidelines. And there's owner accountability for it. So just to highlight a few items in the ordinance for you, because we've received some questions for it. People say, well, what is, how does this relate to single-family? Well, it relates to all single-family, and it also relates to what we call small-scale multifamily. So not that planners, you know, need another piece of jargon in their vocabulary, but duplexes and triplexes and quads are in there as well. So there's different definitions in the code. I just wanted you to be aware of that. Bulky waste is the main topic here. And that is any garbage or trash that weighs more than 50 pounds or such bulk that cannot fit into a cart, can, or refuse bag, excluding white goods. So that's your definition of bulky waste. If it's put out in a compliant manner, it's picked up. And if I'm correct, I have one of my senior staff members here. It's picked up the day after the regular?
That's correct.
Pick up, okay. So if your day is Tuesday, the, the pickup for the compliant bulk trash would be Wednesday. So that's a rule of thumb, but that's where it's compliant. If it's not compliant, that means you didn't do it right. You didn't put it out right. Somebody calls, or it's a proactive case started by code compliance. We talked about white goods. Those are the household appliances. I just wanted to get these on the record. Horticultural waste is collected once per week, again, a different day from, on the regular day. There was a change also in the ordinance that states that horticultural waste that's too large for receptacles such as tree branches, palm fronds, and brush have to be cut in lengths not exceeding six feet instead of four. So that's a change in the ordinance. That, that's important. We also place days that refuse cannot be placed out on the property, and that would be the major holidays, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. The ordinance also goes into great detail about the process for each one of these processes. We talked about bulky waste, non-compliant and compliant, and we made some changes in the ordinance to narrow the scope of this particular section by eliminating the code compliance magistrate process. We're left, leaving in the words only that pertain to this section, and the magistrate process is in another section of the code. So the gist of the ordinance is to bring it into compliance with the contract and set up a detailed process that code compliance will follow and work jointly with Waste Pro. They are aware of the ordinance. They've had input into the ordinance as well as city departments internally. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to attempt to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 57-21, please come forward.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Kevin Bestner, Director of Public Policy for the Royal Palm Coast Realtors Association. We wanted to rise and support this ordinance and thank the city, council, and staff for holding non-compliant homeowners accountable. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 57-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 57-21?
So moved. Second.
And Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm grateful that this ordinance has finally come to fruition. As we all know, our process has been a bit broken in terms of bulk trash, white goods, especially move-outs. So I am grateful that we are putting some formalities together in the form of this ordinance. I wanted to have somebody, Mr. City Manager, speak a little bit about the education plan because we can do this ordinance all we want, but if our residents and homeowners aren't educated on what the process is, if you could kind of share that for the public knowledge in terms of how we're going to communicate this out and where and how frequent and when it's going to start.
Yes, so we are working on a broader public education campaign, not only as part of this, but as part of an effort to transition to same-day pickup. And we have an agreement with Waste Pro to head in that direction. So our staff is working on that as we speak. Unfortunately, I don't have the specifics as to when specific items will be rolled out, but it will be soon.
Okay. And then in terms of the cost, I know Mr. Cattaro said it was, or it states that it's going to be the cost, it's going to be the cost to the homeowner, but it will be whatever it costs for, for us or for Waste Pro to come in and make that extra pickup? Is that what we're charging?
I believe so. And I thought I read in the ordinance, it's either in the ordinance or the contract with Waste Pro. I know I didn't make this number up, somewhere like $46 and something.
Yeah, I think it was in the ordinance, I believe.
$22.38 per cubic foot.
Thank you. Perfect. And do we know how that rates with other? I don't know you. What's your name?
Say your name. Marilyn Morrison. Coca-Cola.
Hi, Marilyn. I'm Jennifer Nelson. Nice to meet you. So Marilyn, then in terms of how, how does that rate with like some of our sister cities and other municipalities that are around our size? Do you know?
I can't answer that question.
I think it's, it's about the same because I think St. Pete, Sarasota was like $21, $22. So, and I, I want to say the county or the city of Fort Myers was around the same, too.
There's a lot of cities that have Waste Pro, so I could imagine it's probably similar.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tate?
Thank you. I have the same question on education, and I wondered if we can put together a flyer or some piece of information that we can give to Kevin for the Royal Palm Association so he can send it out to the, they have a property manager group, and we can get it out that way as well as our rental registration program that we're doing. And lastly, when Mr. Compton first came, he talked about YouTube and all these different ways of communication. I hope we're getting started on that sooner than later.
It's underway.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you. And I agree. You know, I think the two things that we have to make sure that we do in this process is education and enforcement. As long as we do those two items, I think this will be a successful initiative moving forward. Councilmember Long?
Just a quick question for Mr. Cattaro. What's a reasonable estimate of a timeline in order for, from dealing with the nuisance waste removal if you're complying with all these steps and the 48-hour notice and the service with certified mail as far as the, when the notice is brought to your attention and then when it's removed?
From beginning to end, if we have non-compliant bulky trash? Well, people, it's, the process really could be over in two weeks because we have to do a recheck on day 11. We give them so many, so much time to put it out. And what we do is we send them a notice of violation, but if we, it's returned to us, then we post on the property. So maybe a little bit more than that, but it's designed to have a recheck on day 11 based on the process, the way it flows in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 85-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 85-21, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Engineering Design Standards by repealing pages H-1 through H-9 of Section H, seawalls and replacing the repealed pages with pages H-1A through H-1M, H-2A through H-2K, and H-3A through H-3G. Attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Cattaro.
Thank you, Paul Klingon, Public Works.
I'm sorry, Mr. Klingon.
Oh, that's okay. This is regarding the seawall engineering design standards. We'll be discussing the seawall installations, the previous council-proved seawalls, the standards themselves, the seawall heights, seawall permitting, and the next steps. The seawall installations, engineering design standards were from originally 1988 with minor revisions in 2002. In 2017, with Hurricane Irma, there was many seawall failures which prompted the review of the EDS. Public Works is responsible for the structural EDS. DCD is responsible for seawall permitting, inspections, and final approval. Seawall installations, new construction with the, some of the failures, there was the seawall caps tie rod failure, mid-panel failure, tow panel failure that kicked out, some minor seawall failure requiring repairs. Each installation is site-specific. This is an example of a major seawall failure. Council did approve in the past after Hurricane Irma. There's three basic types in the city that are allowed. They're all concrete-based. There's the typical precast concrete panels that were in the existing EDS, the cast-in-place concrete and flat vinyl, and then the cast-in-place concrete corrugated vinyl sheeting. Here's an example of a typical precast concrete panel. Here's a final, sorry, a flat vinyl adjacent to a cast-in-place concrete panel. This one here was a flat vinyl repair in front of an existing seawall. And here's a corrugated vinyl sheeting repair in front of an existing seawall. The, for the engineering design standards, Public Works and DCD met with stakeholders groups, included blow engineering. groups, included blow engineering, was the structural engineer we hired, local seawall contractors, the CCCIA, the Southwest Florida Marine Industry Association, also consulted with the City of Punta Gorda, and Mayor Gunter was also on that stakeholder group. So some of the issues we looked at were the concrete caps, concrete panels, the slabs, steel reinforcement, panel soil penetration, dead man anchors, tieback rods. So as part of the process, in the new EDS, it will require a site-specific design for seawalls by a professional engineer, also require a final certification by a PE that the seawall is constructed per the approved plans. We also looked at the seawall heights. So we looked at the, the city with the 100-year flood zones, the high-risk along the river, the high-risk, I'm sorry, the high-risk coastal area along the river, the high-risk area of the majority of the saltwater canals, and the 500, which is that low-risk area, moderate to low, was the majority of the freshwater canals. And you can see here that the, the yellow area is the 100-year flood area, and the orange is the 500-year flood zone. So, we use this information, and the conclusion from the group was that for the proposed seawall heights, the river would be a mandatory to raise the seawalls 24 inches for new house construction, but if there's an existing house, there's a variance for a 12-inch repair or to match the existing seawall. Similar to the saltwater canal, you can raise the seawalls 24 inches, have a 12-inch repair, or, or match the existing seawall. The freshwater canals, the decision was made to match the existing seawalls there, because we don't have the, behind the wears, the levels are fairly constant. All seawalls, you match the existing seawall for partial replacement, repair, or cap repair. The seawall ends will be level with site-specific design returns. And here's an example of when a seawall was raised, and it would slope down to the, on the left, slope down to the existing seawall. And you can see here is a case where another seawall came in and built it on top. So the new return will be a clean right angle, and here's an example of a newer seawall. The picture on the right, that's higher, and then, for example, someday if that other property does raise their seawall, it'll match the one that's there. So, the new seawall EDS will be effective March 1st, 2022. Permit submitted to the city prior to the effective date are grandfathered. Permit submitted to the Army Corps prior to the effective date will also be grandfathered upon approval. Next steps is, well, we did, we get to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission that approved it 6-0. We brought it for the introduction October 20th, and we're here tonight. And again, these new seawall EDS will be effective March 1st, 2022, after ordinance Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Klingon. Now I'll open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 85-21? Please come forward.
I am a engineer and a sales representative for Tuffin Light. Tuffin Light is a manufacturer in the United States of glass fiber reinforced polymer. That's the, in the specification that you guys have put out. And I'm here to support local builders, and also just to compliment you on the progressive forward thinking that you're, you're doing here, because this is a pretty good specification because this, this product will never corrode, obviously, and it's very, much better priced than the alternative, which is a stainless steel. So I'm just here for that support. But I noticed there is a, and this may be addressed later, but there is a ASTM specification that might need to be modified a little bit, so I don't know if I can put that comment in later, or if now is appropriate.
Go ahead with your comments, sir.
Okay. So the, the GF RP rebar is governed by ASTM D-7957. The, the one that's listed is specifically regarding the fibers themselves. So that may just be looked at before the final version.
Thank you.
Okay? Yep.
Mr. Klingon?
Yeah. Again, if, if the, if the EDS is approved tonight, certainly I can get with this gentleman, and we can, we can correct that by administrative clarification, that type of detail.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 85-21?
Joe Mazurkowitz, BGM Consulting, here on behalf of the Southwest Florida Marine Industry Association. Just want to take the time to, first of all, thank staff for the 18 months of, to two years that we worked on this along with the mayor, and we started off a long distance apart, arguing about every single component that makes up a seawall as to what was, what was necessary and what might not be necessary. The policy in this ordinance that establishes the need for site-specific engineering for each seawall in the City of Cape Coral addresses myriad of concerns that were raised throughout the, throughout our meetings over the last 18 months to years. That together with the engineer of record being responsible for the inspections all the way up, with the exception of the final CO inspection done by the city, we believe this will do a couple of things. Number one, it'll make for better seawalls for every single installation in the City of Cape Coral, because they'll all be site-specific designed by a licensed PE. They'll be inspected by the same licensed PE, that they will be installed in accordance with the drawings that are submitted. And it also will, will allow the contractors, the seawall and marine contractors, to have more oversight and control of their installation, because they will be working with their sub, their engineer with inspections, so they won't be waiting for times, for waiting for the city to come and make inspections. So we believe that this is a win-win, win for the, for the citizens, getting better seawalls. It is also, it's going to be safer seawalls, and we think they'll be done in a more expedited manner. And we respectfully request that you approve this ordinance.
Thank you, sir.
Melanie Williamson. I want to kind of piggyback off of what Joe was saying. First, thank you again to everyone from the city and everyone who is involved in this, because we have come a long way, and the city did more to meet us in the middle than originally what was talked about. But, so I just want to get some clarification. What was it, March 22nd? Did I see up there? Was it March 22nd?
March 1st.
March 1st?
22.
22, okay. So, does that mean that we, so we have from now until March, so anything after March is going to be the new standards? Okay, so everything that we have permitted now, Army Corps, DEP, all that's going to be grandfathered in? I have nothing to worry about? Okay. I do want to just go over a couple things. And I will tell you the page number, so you all, do you have that up there on your? So let's go to H-1C-A, and it's the matrix. And let me know when everyone's on there.
You can go ahead with your, with your comments.
Okay. So, just so everyone understands, when you have cast-in-place concrete and flat vinyl or corrugated, there is absolutely no way that that can ever match a neighbor. Does everyone understand that? And it has match only. You want to, I, I mean, they're, all the matrices are the same, so I'll give you one of mine.
Tell you why, we can put them up on the, over there. Just want to point to what you're talking about.
So, you have on the river, you have these, which is, and then if you go over to the match, it's got the X, but nothing in the 12, but you can't match vinyl. So vinyl, when it goes in front of an existing seawall, the tiebacks have to come back over that seawall. There's no way that, it's got to be at least a minimum of 12. But if we're making it mandatory to raise 24, how come we can't have vinyl raised 24, the two feet? Do you want to?
Okay. I'm trying to...
So if you have an existing house...
Yep.
And say...
So we're trying to give flexibility that this was along the river?
Well, it's any of these. You have matching on all of the matrices.
Again, that's the seawall height.
Right.
Okay. Certainly, this is...
But vinyl can't match. It can never match.
Okay. This is certainly a detail. I'm willing to sit down, and I can clarify, like I said, with an administration, administrative Without, I'd have to look at that.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, it's just literally impossible. We'll never be able to match vinyl. I think that was my only main concern. I just want everything to run as smoothly as possible when this passes, so we don't have any issues. One thing I also did want to bring up, because this hasn't been voted on yet, two of our permits have been rejected, and they've been rejected geared towards these standards. So I didn't understand that.
Vince Cattaro, I'd be happy to look at that and take care of that for you. Oh, I, I'll give you my card. We can certainly talk afterwards. I believe this has to do with the existing regulation on the seawall cap, but we'll talk.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll get that from you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 85-21?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and staff. For the record, Bill Johnson, Jr., Executive Director, Cape Coral Construction Industry Association. I just want to echo the comments made by Mr. Mazurkowitz. This has been a long process, and I would like to thank Mr. Klingon and his staff for sitting with us through many a meetings to get to the point where we are today. Like Mr. Mazurkowitz said, I do believe that these changes will benefit our city residents as a whole, and with this small little interpretation, we can get worked out and keep this moving forward. So we're in full support of what has been presented to you tonight, and we look forward to wrapping this up after a tedious two-year process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 85-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 85-21?
So moved. Second. I would just...
Any discussion? Councilmember Tate.
Okay, so we're passing this, and I have no problem with that, but you are going to address Mrs. Williamson's concerns outside of passing this?
Correct. You can, you can pass the EDS, and that administrative clarification, we'll look at that and make sure we clarify that. And also, there might be something that comes up, you know, in a month from now or a year from now, that we would need that administrative clarification, which I could look at and do for those details.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Mr. Klingon, if you could just come back real quickly and explain the administrative clarification. That doesn't necessarily change the language in the code itself with regards to anybody that might want to potentially look through the code and see what the specifications are. They would see on its face what the issue that she just discussed?
Yeah, that, that would be added to it, that administrative clarification, and then certainly, if there's a few of them, we can come back and do the housekeeping to add it to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I had the opportunity to participate in the stakeholders' group there for 18 months or so. I will tell you that this topic was extremely vetted by not only staff, but many of the marine contractors throughout the city to make sure that, and I think that's why it took 18 months, to make sure we got it right the first time. So I wanted to thank everyone that participated in that, in that lengthy process, and I agree that this will be a much better product, and, and also, I think the ordinance is a much better ordinance because each individual seawall will be site-specific. As we all know, there's many variables with a particular site, so the engineer that will be submitting the plans will have to look at each site specifically. So I think it'll be a much, much better and stronger finished product at the end. So I did want to thank everyone that participated in this, this endeavor. So thank you. We have a motion. We have a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 245-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 245-21, a resolution providing for hardship deferral of special assessments and legacy assessments, and of certain fees for certain property owners and their properties for fiscal year 2022, based on criteria established by the City Council in Resolution 47-14, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Mason.
Yes, sir, I'm almost there. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Oh, there's always a gizmo that I need to touch, and it's, you know, I didn't know which one it was. Thank you. Anyways, Mark Mason, Financial Service Director. Thank you all. Hardship deferral, we do this annually. Each year, we receive applications for hardship deferrals for those that are looking to defer all or a portion of their special assessments and fees. Applications are reviewed and either approved or denied that are pursuant to our hardship deferral program, which is Resolution 47-14. The applicants then are, that do not meet the criteria, they are provided any instructions to appeal, and then deferred assessments are paid by the general fund. So we set aside money each year for those payments. However, it should be understood that any deferred assessments, they, they, they basically work, they're, they're still due. They don't go away. They accrue interest over a period of time, and they have to be paid at some time in the future when they're able to pay them. So for fiscal year 2022, we had 65 applications received, we had 10 withdrawn or denied, 55 been approved, and for a total dollar value of $90,000. This compares back to fiscal year 2021, when we had $114,000 in hardship applications. And that's it. Have any questions?
Thank you, sir. And now I open up the public input. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 245-21? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance, correction, Resolution 245-21?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Councilmember Tate.
Mr. Mason, is it time to relook at that resolution from 14, to see if anything needs to be updated in that hardship application? Or is it, I didn't look at it, so I don't know, is it anything we need to look at with times have changed?
Times have changed. I would say, you know, it's been at least... Times have changed. I would say, you know, it's been at least, what, now it's five years, six years since it was, it was approved in, and actually, it was approved in 15, so, but we'll certainly be more than happy to look at it. But it uses the guidelines that are associated with HUD. So as HUD guidelines are changed, so too does the rules associated with what we're reviewing.
Okay, so if you just take a look at it, and if we need to update it, just let us know. Thanks.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Did I open up public input, Madam City Clerk? I did, and we closed it, and we have a motion and a second on the floor. Could you please call the roll?
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Seven eyes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10B, Introductions. Madam City Clerk, we're at ordinance 89-21. Please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 89-21, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as the west half of the southwest quarter, less the west 320 feet thereof, and the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter. Section 16, Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida. As more particularly described herein, from single-family residential to commercial corridor zone, property is located at 2301 Southwest Pine Island Road, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November 17, 2021.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? See, and none. We'll move on to ordinance 91-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the first public hearing date.
Ordinance 91-21, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as Unit 24, Block 1068, Lots 1 through 40, Block 1154, Lots 1 through 40, and Block 1073, Lots 1 through 15, and 30 through 40, Cape Coral subdivision. From professional office to residential multifamily low zone, property located between Cultural Park Boulevard South to the east, Southeast 9th Street to the south, Southeast 6th Court to the west, and Southeast 7th Street to the north, providing severability and an effective date. The first public hearing will be November 17, 2021.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? See, and none. We'll move on to ordinance 92-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 92-21, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as Lots 1 through 7, Block 1146, Unit 22, Cape Coral, from professional to residential multifamily medium zone, by rezoning property described as Lots 8 through 10, Block 1146, Unit 22, Cape Coral, from residential multifamily low to residential multifamily medium zone. Property is located at 816 Southeast 8th Place, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November 17, 2021.
Any comments by staff or council? See, and none. Move on to ordinance 95-21. Has been withdrawn from tonight's agenda by the applicant, so we will move on to ordinance 68-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 68-21, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, by creating Article 9, Naming of City Assets, providing purpose, definitions, policy, and procedure for naming or renaming of city assets or commemorative work, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November 17, 2021.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? See, and none. We'll move on to ordinance 94-21. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 94-21, an ordinance amending City of Cape Coral ordinance 74-20, as amended by ordinances 13-21, 46-21, and 87-21, which adopted the City of Cape Coral operating budget, revenues, and expenditures, and capital budget for fiscal year 2021, by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of $77,333,140, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November 17, 2021.
Thank you. Any discussion by staff or council? See, and none. We'll move on to item 11, Unfinished Business. I don't see anything noted in our agenda. We do have 11A follow-up items for council. Any follow-up items that council would like to discuss? See, and none. We'll move on to item 12, New Business. At this time, I think we're going to go through the process of Mayor Pro Tem and our office manager, and several of our committees and boards, membership fees. So we'll go down the list. First item of discussion is Mayor Pro Tem selection. So I'd like to open it up for any nominations or any volunteers for the Mayor Pro Tem selection. You would like, like to be Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll nominate. For my last hurrah.
I'll nominate her to do it. I like the idea of rotating annually, so, and it's your last hurrah.
Okay, we have one nomination on the floor. Councilmember Tate, do we have any other nominations? Okay, see, and none. Do we have a motion on the floor for Councilmember Tate to be Mayor Pro Tem?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See, and none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Seven eyes, motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is the office manager selections. Do we have, do we have any nominations or any volunteers?
Mayor, I think that you should continue this year. I think it's been cohesive, and you're here, and I, I just really like the way it's been going.
Yep, I second. I mean, did you make a motion?
No, but I will. I just wanted to see if you... Okay.
Sorry. Second.
He didn't ask for it yet, but I was going to, yes.
So, did you make a motion?
I'm making a motion that the Mayor Gunter become the office manager with no increase in pay.
Nope. I second that. Absolutely no increase.
Any other discussions on this topic? See, and none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Seven eyes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is membership fees. Either the same fees that we've paid out for several years. I think all of council has gotten a copy of the different organizations that we participate in. I will read the list here that I have in front of me. We had the Florida League of Cities, the Florida League of Mayors, Metropolitan Planning Organization, the National League of Cities, and the Southwest Florida League of Cities, and also the U.S. Conference of Mayors. They're, they are the organizations that we have been participating in. So I'll open up the discussion from there, and I'll see Madam City Clerk's light ones.
Yes, I just have one note for council. The agenda request form makes a reference to the Southwest Florida League of Cities in selecting a tier. That no longer applies. We have confirmed the fee is the $3,000 on the list, so please just disregard that notation.
Yeah, my understanding, that was for associate members, that tier system, of, for anyone that wanted to participate as an associate member. But as far as municipalities that wanted to participate, it was just still the same $3,000 fee. So, I guess I'll open it up for a discussion or a motion to...
Motion to approve the membership fees as written with the correction that our city clerk gave us.
Second.
Any discussion on that? See, and none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Seven eyes, motion carried.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the liaison appointments on the several boards that council sits on. So I think what I'll do is I'll just go down each item individually. Let's see, Councilmember Hayden, you got your light on? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to know if it might make it easier if I just request to remain on the seven that I'm currently on.
Okay.
And I'll run those down, if you, if you all wish.
How about if we just make a motion to approve your seven?
I think, I think the easiest thing to do is go down each individual committee.
Okay.
And I will mention who's on that now, and we'll take nominations, or see if a person wants a volunteer, and then, and then have a motion for each specific...
Sorry, Mayor, just to clarify, what you're saying is, is we'll have to do a motion and a second for each single one, or we're going to lump it all together?
Well, we can, I think we need to go down the list and find out, number one, who's still interested in that, and then, secondly, to see if, give everyone else the opportunity to see if they want to participate on that particular board. If we want to do one motion at the end, or each individual, I'll leave it up to the recommendation. And Madam City Clerk, what would be easier for you?
That's an excellent question.
I personally think just go down the...
One, one motion for each item, so we'll have a total of like 18 motions when we're done. If you, if we do it all in one group, we'll still be tallying and surveying and trying to decide if there's any changes. So I would, if council agrees, each board a motion for the appointment.
Okay, all right. I agree with that. It may take us a little longer, but I think it'll be a little clearer to, to understand. Okay, the first board that we have is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Councilmember Nelson presently sits on that board, so we'll open up for any nominations or any volunteers that want to fulfill that particular board.
I nominate Councilmember Nelson.
No, I was going to nominate Councilmember Costin.
When are the meetings?
Um, they're in the evening. They do them in the evening. It's awesome, like at 5:30.
Unfortunately, that will not work for me.
Okay, then I'll take the nomination.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to nom, be considered for that board? All right, we just have Councilmember Nelson to continue on that board, so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Councilmember Nelson.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? See, and none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, now we'll go on to the Audit Committee. That particular committee is currently liaison, is held by Councilmember Hayden. His earlier comments, sounds like he has a desire to continue on that.
Motion to approve Councilmember Hayden on the audit.
Second, and every other one he want. No, I'm kidding. I'm sorry.
They need it, they need it.
All right, any other volunteers for that particular committee? See, and none. We have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, the next one on the list, Budget Review Committee. We have current Councilmember Hayden.
Motion to appoint Councilmember Hayden.
Second.
Boy, that was quick.
I told you I could save five.
Any, any other, no, no other volunteers? So we got a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the Budget Review Committee.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, we have the Charter School Governing Board, currently held by Councilmember Tate, so I will open that up for any volunteers.
Motion to appoint Councilmember Tate to the Charter School Governing Board.
Does Councilmember Tate want that?
Oh, sorry, do you want it?
Yeah, no, I'll take it because...
Second.
Any other volunteers? See, and none. Have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, we have the Selection Advisory Committee. Councilmember Hayden currently on that as a liaison.
Motion to approve Councilmember Hayden.
Second.
Any other volunteers? See, and none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, the next one on the list is Youth Council. This particular board has a, a member, a liaison member that's assigned, and a alternate, the liaison member assigned to the Youth Council now is Councilmember Hayden, with Councilmember Costin as a alternate. So do we have anyone that would be interested to be in on this board? As Councilmember Hayden stated earlier, he would have the desire to stay on as the Youth Council liaison.
Motion to keep both Councilmember Hayden as the liaison and Councilmember Costin as the...
Second.
Yeah, alternate. Second.
Any other volunteers? Okay, see, and none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, then the next position is the Transportation Advisory Committee. This particular committee is held by five council members and one alternate. Currently, Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Shepherd, myself, Councilmember Hayden, and Councilmember Long are the five members on the Transportation Advisory Committee, with Councilmember Costin as a alternate. I just want to remind everyone that whomever is on this particular board as a voting member, those five individuals, those five individuals have been in the past on the Metropolitan Planning Organization as well. So I just wanted to, to mention that. So, for myself, I would ask to still be on the Transportation Advisory Committee. Anyone else? It looks like we have Councilmember Costin.
Mayor, the, what you just read doesn't match what I have in the, in the backup, so I'm wondering if we have different information.
What do you have on there?
I have Welsh as a member and Long as an alternate, not me, on the list.
Okay. Well, we may have made that change, the, maybe that, the list that I have is a order list. So you have Councilmember Long as an alternate, and...
Welsh as a voting member.
Welsh, okay.
Madam City Clerk, is that correct? Okay.
And I wanted to ask if I could switch with Councilmember Long and give him the spot, and I'll take the alternate?
I'd be happy to do that.
Hallelujah. Thank you.
Okay. Is anyone else wishing to be on that particular board? Councilmember Hayden?
So I'm making motion to approve Nelson as the alternate, Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, and Welsh.
And Long.
And Long.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, we have the Community Development Block Grant Committee. Councilmember Welsh is currently the liaison. Do we have a nomination or a volunteer for that particular?
Motion to approve Councilmember Welsh.
Second.
Any discussion? Any other volunteers? See, and none, council, I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, the Community Redevelopment Agency, that particular liaison position is held by Councilmember Tate. Last year, we had put Councilmember Welsh as a alternate, but I, I will say that I know we never had an alternate on that particular board, so I don't really know if there's a need for that. But that's what we did last year, which was a need for that, but that's what we did last year, which was different than the previous years. And also have a, a letter since Councilmember Welsh is, is in attending, he stated in his letter that he had a desire not to be the alternate, but he did have a desire to be the liaison, so I wanted to mention that, put that on record. So at this time, I'll open up for any nominees.
Mayor, the only thing I would like to say about that is, having been the liaison in the last year, because it falls in our, in my district, it is extremely beneficial for future councils as well, for the person who is representing District One to be the CRA, it kind of keeps everything, the information flowing, so I don't mind serving in that position. I appreciate that, but it would be at the will of council.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, I held that liaison position myself when I was the District One Council Member, and I think it's extremely important for the District One Councilmember to be the liaison. That's their backyard, and I think for that reason that the District One representative should be the liaison, so I would support that.
Motion to approve Councilmember Tate as the liaison to the CRA.
I'll second.
And remove, wait, and remove the alternate role unless you guys, no, remove the alternate role.
Okay, does, who was the second?
I.
I would.
I seconded, but I don't know if I'm the, and I agree if, if I am the second.
Okay. So we have two seconds and they both agree.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have the Golf Course Advisory Board. Councilmember Hayden is currently the liaison, as he mentioned early, he would prefer to stay on that particular board.
Motion to approve Councilmember Hayden for the Golf Course Advisory.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Cosden?
I noted that you missed Districting Commission, and I think it's because you have an older list.
Yeah, probably did.
Yeah, so can we do that one after this?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else that wants to be on the?
I made a motion, was second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, and then we're doing the Districting Commission? Yes, hold on, here we go. Okay, Districting Commission, apparently that's a, going to be a new board that's coming up, and that particular position is vacant now, so do we have anyone that would like to serve on the Districting Commission Board?
I would love to.
Okay. Anybody else?
Motion to approve Councilmember Cosden.
I mean, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, I see your light on.
I just wanted to add that we have identified Mondays for the meetings in the late afternoon. The first meeting is set for the fifteenth at three o'clock.
Perfect.
That work for you, Councilmember Cosden? Great. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, our next, we have the Waterway Advisory Board.
Motion to approve Councilmember Long.
Second.
What about Planning and Zoning?
We'll go back.
Oh, sorry, okay. Second.
So, I'm sorry with all the, all the chatter, I missed the motion.
I know, she's, she's keeping you busy. It's a motion to approve Councilmember Long for the Water Advisory Board.
Okay, and we had a second?
Second, got a dynamic second from Councilmember Shepherd.
You're going to miss me up here.
Alright, any other, anyone else that would like to volunteer? Mr. Councilmember Shepherd, you have a desire?
Nothing.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion in a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
And Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next is Planning and Zoning Commission. As of now, we have Councilmember Shepherd noted as the liaison with Councilmember Welsh. Again, I think this was another board that typically we only had one liaison, and we added a alternate last year, so I guess we can discuss as council if we just want a liaison position, or we want a liaison and alternate, but I will open the floor up for the liaison position or the alternate.
Councilmember Shepherd, do you still want to stay on?
I'm sorry?
Does Councilmember Shepherd still want to stay on?
Yeah, I'll stay.
Motion to approve Councilman Shepherd for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and if we don't need an alternate, then that's in my motion.
Okay. The second, agree?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, like I mentioned early, typically the individuals that are voting members on the Transportation Advisory Committee are typically that, so I guess we just need a motion.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
Uh, one question. A while back, when we didn't have so many people that were able to go to a meeting, we discussed here that everybody that's on this council would be a member of the MPO, and then if we needed to, we would send somebody as an alternate, so is that still the deal?
Yeah, I think the discussion that we had was, we would still identify the five members.
Right.
But would the remaining three council members would automatically be a alternate on the.
Right, because I'm not, the way it's reading, I'm one of the five, and I'm not. It's Cosden, Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, and it wasn't me, I think it was Long.
Alright, could you, Madam City Clerk, could you clarify who is on the Transportation Advisory Committee as the liaison voting members?
Yes. This evening, you appointed Councilmember Nelson as the alternate, and for the members, Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, Welsh, and Long.
So I think we would need a motion for those five voting members, and then possibly add the remaining three council members as alternates.
So move.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Thank you. We had a discussion about having different members on the CTAC versus the MPO. I was one of the members that could only be on the MPO, and I would like to remain a regular member of the MPO. I think maybe that's where Councilmember Tate is.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but I would like to, and I need to be actually, so that I can chair the local coordinating board. I have to be a member of the MPO.
Alright, so let's just open that back up for discussion then. Madam City Clerk, could you mention the five people that are on the CTAC again?
Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, Welsh, and Long.
So.
What I have, but we're talking about MPO now, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. I just wanted to see who was on the other.
And you need five for the MPO?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, so it would be Cosden, Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, and Long.
Okay. Is anyone else wishing to be on that particular board?
So I made a motion to approve Nelson as the alternate, Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, and Welsh.
And Long?
And Long.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have the Community Development Block Grant Committee. Councilmember Welsh is currently the liaison. Do we have a nomination or a volunteer for that particular?
Motion to approve Councilmember Welsh.
Second.
Any discussion? Any other volunteers? Seeing none, council, I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item we have is the Florida League of Cities Voting Delicate. As of right now, I am the voting delegate, and I would like to continue that. I will just mention to council for the future that that appointment with the Florida League of Cities basically starts in September of this year to August of next year, so we kind of had this issue with when Councilmember Williams was there. If you want to make a change, that change theoretically would have to happen in April, so I just wanted to mention that. That way, maybe Madam City Clerk, if you could bring that up in our April meeting, because that would be the time, as a council, we would make a recommendation to the Florida League of Cities for their September meeting.
Motion to approve Mayor Gunter and Councilmember Hayden as the alternate.
Not an alternate.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, like I mentioned earlier, typically the individuals that are voting members on the Transportation Advisory Committee are typically that, so I guess we just need a motion.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
Uh, one question. A while back, when we didn't have so many people that were able to go to a meeting, we discussed here that everybody that's on this council would be a member of the MPO, and then if we needed to, we would send somebody as an alternate, so is that still the deal?
Yeah, I think the discussion that we had was, we would still identify the five members.
Right.
But would the remaining three council members would automatically be a alternate on the.
Right, because I'm not, the way it's reading, I'm one of the five, and I'm not. It's Cosden, Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, and it wasn't me, I think it was Long.
Alright, could you, Madam City Clerk, could you clarify who is on the Transportation Advisory Committee as the liaison voting members?
Yes. This evening, you appointed Councilmember Nelson as the alternate, and for the members, Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, Welsh, and Long.
So I think we would need a motion for those five voting members, and then possibly add the remaining three council members as alternates.
So move.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Thank you. We had a discussion about having different members on the CTAC versus the MPO. I was one of the members that could only be on the MPO, and I would like to remain a regular member of the MPO. I think maybe that's where Councilmember Tate is.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but I would like to, and I need to be actually, so that I can chair the local coordinating board. I have to be a member of the MPO.
Alright, so let's just open that back up for discussion then. Madam City Clerk, could you mention the five people that are on the CTAC again?
Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, Welsh, and Long.
So.
What I have, but we're talking about MPO now, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. I just wanted to see who was on the other.
And you need five for the MPO?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, so it would be Cosden, Shepherd, Gunter, Hayden, and Long.
Okay.
And Welsh would be the alternate, because he's been the alternate before.
Okay. Alright, so is that a motion?
That is.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
One point of clarification, I know that you just in the motion put Welsh as the alternate. Are the other two remaining members of council alternates as well?
Yes, yeah, that's what we discussed.
Thank you. Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have... The next committee is the National League of Cities. We have Councilmember Welsh and Councilmember Nelson as an alternate currently, and I will open the floor up for any nominations or any volunteer, and I have Councilmember Cosden to light on.
Thank you. In the past, I did at least one or two years, I was a representative for the National League of Cities, and I would love to do it again this year.
Okay.
I make a motion to add Councilmember Cosden as the National League of Cities member and Councilmember Nelson as the alternate.
Yay.
Second. Can I second that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
And the last one that's on the list, but presently, we do not have any representation, is the Torres Development Council.
When do we get that representation?
I will tell you that I have been working with Commissioner Ruane to try to get us back on that particular committee. So, I'm hoping that will hopefully transpire by the beginning of the year.
Good, because I would love to serve on that and get us back on there at least. Thank you.
And once we get those details worked out, I will bring that back to council.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, and I think, Madam City Clerk, it looks like we covered everything, unless I missed something.
I think we have it all, yes, for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Meeting calendar.
All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is our meeting calendar. I know it was in our backup material. I will just mention that the city manager and myself did have a discussion on the calendar for next year. We pretty much... He had a preference to make sure we had a Cal meeting on the fourth Wednesday of the month throughout the year unless we were on hiatus. But, that particular item on the schedule was on a as-need basis, and I think it does note that in the schedule. Mr. City Manager, would you like to elaborate further on that?
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. So, I think it's easier to have it on the schedule, and if it comes a time we don't need it, we'll just remove it. So, with that being said, if we don't have any further council discussion, do we have a motion to approve the 2022 calendar as presented?
Second, or fir... I... Yes.
Like that.
I'm tired, I'm sorry.
So, who was first?
Cosden, and second by Nelson.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item 13, reports. Councilmember Hayden, report.
Yeah, I don't get to talk about rum too much up here, but I get to tonight, as we pay tribute to our special veterans tonight. I also wanted to mention, and continuing with that theme, that Wicked Dolphin has partnered with the Brotherhood of Heroes Military Museum and Resource Center to put out a commemorative rum that will be available starting next Tuesday. And all proceeds from that rum will go back to the Military Museum to help our veterans. So, just, again, an outstanding effort by Wicked Dolphin and what they do for our community, and a tremendous honor for our veterans. So, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Long, report.
No report, ma'am.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a few things. First of all, I attended the United Way Breakfast this morning, the kickoff for the campaign, and I was pleasantly surprised and happy to see that we are... City of Cape Coral is now a trendsetter as we generated around $40,000 last year from our United Way campaign, and in previous years, we were trending at about $10,000 to $11,000 annually for our campaign. So, we had a significant increase, and I wanted to thank all of the staff that worked on that last year. But, here we are with this year. Last year during the campaign, I hosted, for those of y'all that are new, Breakfast Taco Tuesday. When I met with the city manager today, he told me that I am allowed to host that again for our employees and anybody else that wants to order breakfast tacos. It'll... I pay for all the supplies to make the breakfast tacos. I have two dear friends, Pamela Cronin and Jay Johnson, that have... Will come and help me serve. They both own restaurants, and so, I will be hosting that again. I'm looking at the date of December 7th. So, I have permission from the city manager to work with staff to get the word out about this, so, just giving you all a heads up. They're really good. And then Connie had passed out at the beginning of the meeting, the Edison Festival of Lights sponsorship menu, and you may say, why are you... Why do we have this? This is in Fort Myers. So, this... I was approached two weeks ago by two committee members for the Edison Festival Lights to see if the City of Cape Coral would like to partner and participate as a sponsor for this event. It's a several-hour event. There's a VIP event, there's, of course, a parade. There's an opportunity for us to have a booth, depending on what sponsorship level we look at. I spoke with Kevin Anderson on Sunday. We were at a joint event together. We have some mutual friends, and I had asked him and the committee members what the sponsorship was for the city of Fort Myers. They do around $5,600 in sponsorship in the form of a grant, and in the past, this parade, the mayor's always riding the parade. If we do agree as a council that we want to sponsor this event, they have agreed to let us as well if we want to ride in the parade or attend the VIP event. We can certainly do that. I think, you know, the reason they asked me is, well, I know, is because I know that we have a joint project coming up with water pipeline, and since the mayor has always asked other elected officials to participate, you know, they came to me and said, wouldn't it be a great opportunity to show collaboration and partnership by supporting this event? So, my comment back was, great, what event will you all support with us? Because we have several. So, that's something down the road. I said I would present it during my report, so I'm presenting it. You know, I obviously, you know, if we want to do this, great, you know? If you guys say, no, we don't want to do this, then that's okay, too. But, I thought I would present it. I was asked to. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Cosden.
I just have a question. Are any other cities sponsoring that you know of?
No, I don't know if the county sponsors are not. I didn't check that. I didn't ask that question. One of the things that this Edison Festival Lights committee board does is they offer educational programs. I don't know if you're aware of that. Stemtastic is one of their big ones. They do the Inventors Fair, which also includes kids from Cape Coral, and they also give scholarships, and they give them countywide. And I wasn't able to get the number of recipients from Cape Coral from last year or the year before. They just didn't have that information available for me when I asked. But, it is my understanding that Cape Coral students, I mean, it's countywide, so they've won these scholarships before. So, our sponsorship would go to funding those programs for children that, you know, I know Piper's involved in the Inventors Fair a few years ago, that several other Cape Coral students do as well.
And then, another question, I guess it's for the city manager. Does the city sponsor events?
We don't even sponsor our own events.
Obviously, our own events.
I think the short answer to that question is yes. Obviously, we sponsor the Red, White &amp; Boom event.
Okay, that's a good example. Okay. All right, I'm not really sure, but thank you for the information.
Yeah, so, we would just need to decide if we want to sponsor or not. If you want time to think about it, we can talk about it in our next voting meeting. The event, I think it's in February, so, yeah, February. And like I said, it's a pretty involved event. I know the county commissioners do also ride in the parade, they're invited, but, you know, whatever you guys decide. I mean, it's just, I was approached, and I said, I would ask, and like I said, I mean, the idea is that we collaborate, and they're our sister city across the bridge, or we're theirs, and, you know, it might be a nice gesture, and then, you know, hopefully, they return the favor and sponsor one of our events. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I agree that collaboration between the two cities is important. You know, we do have projects, but what I would, you know, that we work on together. One thing that I would like to see is maybe some more information to see if the county participates in this particular event, any other cities. You had mentioned the grant, I think, that the city of Fort Myers provides. Maybe get some more information on that, and then maybe in our next meeting, you could bring that information back to us.
Happy to.
So, we have a little more information and insight of exactly, you know, what our monies would be doing. And I think if we had that information, then I would probably be a little more at ease to entertain this possibility.
Okay, and I will try to see if they can collect the specific information of how many scholarships or participants they had in their Inventors Fair, as well as the Stemtastic and scholarships.
Okay.
No problem.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on that particular topic? Okay, looks like we skipped over the Parks and Recreation Liaison. It's currently held by Councilmember Welsh, so we will need to open that up as well. So, do we have any volunteers for that particular position, or do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to have Councilmember Welsh. I know he said he wanted it, and he'd been working on that, so make a motion to approve him.
Okay, and any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, were you done in your report?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. And Councilmember Shepherd, report?
No report.
All right, Councilmember Tate?
Yes, just to give you an update on the insurance, I think you all got emails today on the updated bill that has been filed by Senator Rubio for the bipartisan legislation to reauthorize the National Flood Insurance Program. There are three letters that our Becker Polikoff, Amanda Wood, wrote today as sample letters to give to the mayor to send out to Donald Scott and Rubio, especially to Donald, to encourage him to get on board to this. So, I'd like to make a motion that this council approve the mayor sending the letters, signing the letters, and sending the letters.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have... The next committee is the National League of Cities. We have Councilmember Welsh and Councilmember Nelson as an alternate currently, and I will open the floor up for any nominations or any volunteer, and I have Councilmember Cosden to light on.
Thank you. In the past, I did at least one or two years, I was a representative for the National League of Cities, and I would love to do it again this year.
Okay. I make a motion to add Councilmember Cosden as the National League of Cities member and Councilmember Nelson as the alternate.
Yay.
Second. Can I second that? Okay, second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item 13, reports. Councilmember Hayden, report.
Yeah, I don't get to talk about rum too much up here, but I get to tonight, as we pay tribute to our special veterans tonight, I also wanted to mention, and continuing with that theme, that Wicked Dolphin has partnered with the Brotherhood of Heroes Military Museum and Resource Center to put out a commemorative rum that will be available starting next Tuesday, and all proceeds from that rum will go back to the Military Museum to help our veterans. So, just, again, an outstanding effort by Wicked Dolphin and what they do for our community, and a tremendous honor for our veterans. So, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Long, report.
No report, ma'am.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor, I have a few things. First of all, I attended the United Way Breakfast this morning, the kickoff for the campaign, and I was pleasantly surprised and happy to see that we are... City of Cape Coral is now a trendsetter as we generated around $40,000 last year from our United Way campaign, and in previous years, we were trending at about $10,000 to $11,000 annually for our campaign. So, we had a significant increase, and I wanted to thank all of the staff that worked on that last year. But, here we are with this year. Last year during the campaign, I hosted, for those of y'all that are new, Breakfast Taco Tuesday. When I met with the city manager today, he told me that I am allowed to host that again for our employees and anybody else that wants to order breakfast tacos. It'll... I pay for all the supplies to make the breakfast tacos. I have two dear friends, Pamela Cronin and Jay Johnson, that have... Will come and help me serve. They both own restaurants, and so, I will be hosting that again. I'm looking at the date of December 7th, so, I have permission from the city manager to work with staff to get the word out about this, so, just giving you all a heads up. They're really good. And then Connie had passed out at the beginning of the meeting, the Edison Festival of Lights sponsorship menu, and you may say, why are you... Why do we have this? This is in Fort Myers. So, this... I was approached two weeks ago by two committee members for the Edison Festival Lights to see if the City of Cape Coral would like to partner and participate as a sponsor for this event. It's a several-hour event. There's a VIP event, there's, of course, a parade. There's an opportunity for us to have a booth, depending on what sponsorship level we look at. I spoke with Kevin Anderson on Sunday. We were at a joint event together. We have some mutual friends, and I had asked him and the committee members what the sponsorship was for the city of Fort Myers. They do around $5,600 in sponsorship in the form of a grant, and in the past, this parade, the mayor's always riding the parade. If we do agree as a council that we want to sponsor this event, they have agreed to let us as well if we want to ride in the parade or attend the VIP event. We can certainly do that. I think, you know, the reason they asked me is, well, I know, is because I know that we have a joint project coming up with the water pipeline, and since the mayor has always asked other elected officials to participate, you know, they came to me and said, wouldn't it be a great opportunity to show collaboration and partnership by supporting this event? So, my comment back was, great, what event will you all support with us? Because we have several. So, that's something down the road. I said I would present it during my report, so I'm presenting it. You know, I obviously, you know, if we want to do this, great, you know? If you guys say, no, we don't want to do this, then that's okay, too.